I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. See if one have any additions or deletions to our agenda for tonight. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Some move.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, moving on. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on with Mr. Ray to our financial report for February.
Everybody should have the February financial statements in their board packets. I'm just going to talk about a couple of highlights in getting us ready for our budget, which is forthcoming. The first thing I'd like to discuss is property tax. That's the one of three major sources of revenue for us. Property tax, sales tax, and BEP. When I talk about the financial statements and the budget that's forthcoming, I want to kind of think of two words. One is conservative, and that's how I my approach to revenue. And the other one is in the middle is reasonable. It's conservative is being just very tight and reasonable is kind of moving to the right a little bit from conservative. The other one, the third one, I won't say what I told Kelly, but it's it's called dreaming. It's probably not going to happen. So I really feel like that our current budget for property taxes is conservative to reasonable. There's a lot that goes into property taxes, but I don't think that we're going to have trouble achieving what we've budgeted as far as revenue is concerned. The next is sales tax. You will notice this month's sales tax at $115,000 is very low. That actually represents November's sales. You gotta remember we're three months in arrears. So the sales tax that will hit your March financial statements, that number is actually going to be $200,000. And that represents December sales and I think whatever occurred in November, whoever didn't report in a timely manner, they got caught up in December. Generally speaking, we're going to average 140,000, $150,000 a month. Now, that being said, the conclusion for our our sales tax is it's very conservative. My estimate is very conservative. We will not have a problem achieving our budgeted number, and I really expect to go beyond that. The next one would be our BEP. That's your final third, and that is based on allocation from the state and number of students. And we collect what we have budgeted is what we're going to collect. I always say that slow and steady with revenues is a nice place to be. So we don't experience in the state of Tennessee any big ups, and therefore we don't experience any big downs. And that's our that's how we we go about our budget. Any questions on revenues for the financial statements? Expenditures. With the bonuses that we've paid out thus far, we kind of adjusted our salaries to get in line maybe with I was a little too conservative at last year's budget with the current crisis. Tax revenues came in better than I expected, so we were able to pay out a bonus. And that brings, for the most part, our salary and benefits in line to what we usually every year is try to increase the salary schedule. And as I stated before, like our revenue in the state of Tennessee doesn't do this. We like to do that with our salary schedule every year over time. Reminds me of the book I read with Nugget, Steady Sloth. Slow and steady is the sloth, the slow and steady sloth. Every year, you'll notice Knox County will go years without an increase, and then all of a sudden they give a 5%, which sounds great, and then they'll go years without an increase. We're slow and steady. Every year, we we try to do something. So that's what the bonuses did for us this year.
Can we maybe have a dramatic reading of that next month?
Oh, it's a great book.
Okay.
Steady Sloth. It's awesome. Nugget loves it.
That's like the book that he drinks.
Very similar, yes. I've got Scaredy Cat, too, if you want to. Cafeteria. Any any questions on general purpose fund? Sorry. I'll get back to being serious. Federal projects, there's really not too much to say on federal projects. It's what I call expenditures. Reimbursements. You spend the money, you get reimbursed. We are about $70,000 in arrears. It's a little more than I like, but we've had a lot of activity going on with federal projects, so we'll get that caught back up. Usually I like it to be about $30,000 or $40,000, meaning we spent $70,000 and we haven't gotten reimbursed for it yet. I like that number to be about $40,000. Cafeteria, three big things in the financials for your cafeteria fund. You'll notice that our surplus today is about $12,000. But you'll also notice we've spent 17, almost $18,000 on equipment. $3,000 of that I'm looking to get reimbursed from FEMA through a grant. Long story short, I do expect cafeteria to end up with a surplus of about $30,000 to $35,000, which is, as I always say, about what our commodities are. That's generally where we land. Barring any huge expenditures, like a freezer, if it goes down, that can be $30,000 very quickly. We did buy a new steamer at North Clinton. That's $11,000. And a new ice maker at South Clinton was about $4,000. Those are kind of what I would consider normal annual expenditures for equipment. Every year, we're going to have something. Steamer, oven, ice maker, it's always going to be something. Any questions on cafeteria?
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report for the month of February as presented.
Some move.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kay Kay Webster?
Yes.
Tim Bobble?
Yes.
Merrill Frost?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on into budget amendment number three.
Everybody should have a memo from from me about the budget amendment number three. There's no recommended budget amendment for general purpose school fund, and there's no recommended amendment in the school nutrition cafeteria fund. The only thing we're doing tonight is what we're going to call ESR 2.0. We're adding that to the federal projects. I think last month we added ESR 1.0. That was 175,000 roughly. ESR 2.0 is $675,000. So we're laying that in the budget. However, that is a multi-year grant. We have until 2023 to spend that. So I don't look for that to be spent this year, but we do have to budget for it. And we budgeted the entire grant as revenue. Any questions on that? And I think it kind of mirrors ESR 1.0, just a lot more money.
What does that have to be spent on? Is it allocated for?
Was it 20% summer?
That is, the ESR 2.0 has a focus on deferred maintenance and just trying to offset the learning loss and COVID expenditures. And so we've really, what Scott and I have decided to do, a big chunk of that is going towards some maintenance projects that normally we would have to take out of either fund balance or take out of our general purpose funds. So that's how we're paying for the boiler that we're replacing at Clinton Elementary. We're actually going to seek reimbursement for some of our HVAC units that we've had to replace at South Clinton this year. It's going to pay for two of our additional teaching assistants at Clinton Elementary School. We'll get reimbursed for that. We have paid our teachers to eat with children on a voluntary basis this year, so that those funds, we can seek reimbursement from the ESR 2.0 for. And we've got flagged for next year to get teachers all teachers new MacBooks because our MacBooks are getting outdated, so that money will come from ESR.
And we'll update you on the budget hand, so next year you'll see ESR 2.0 budgeted for whatever we don't spend this year. Any questions on the budget amendment?
Our goal with the ESR funds, just to kind of piggyback on Scott, is every allowable expenditure, because we just have these funds until 2023, and in a few minutes, we'll talk about the round 3.0 that's coming our way. We are really trying to capture everything that we can get reimbursed for that we paid out of GP that is an allowable expense in ESR. We are trying to capture that so that we're putting more money back in GP. And our goal is to use this ESR funds to address some deferred maintenance, to address learning loss, to address some extended learning opportunities for kids, but to also try to use this funds to free up as much GP funds as we can between now and 2023.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray or Ms. Johnson? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment three as presented.
Some move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kay Kay Webster?
Yes.
Tim Bobble?
Yes.
Merrill Frost?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on to a new business, we have down to approve our salary schedule for 2021 and 2022 year. This will be on a first and second reading. Kim, could you give, or Kim, Kelly, could you give the the highlights on this? I think we've got some great news coming.
We do have some good news coming. We are going to act in faith if the governor's going to pull through this year. He has promised, you know, the the money that came through this semester was one-time money, and that's what we're doing, the additional $450 bonus for teachers. It's going to be actually in their March paycheck. But that was one-time money. But he has assured us that he's going to lay in a 4% for next fiscal year as part of the BEP. Now, keep in mind that will be on the instructional component, which funds about 70% of our positions at the state minimum salary schedule. So that doesn't ever equate to a 4% for us, but we are using some local funds, some GP funds, to kind of add on to that to where, when you look at the salary step, each step is going to, for certified teachers, have a $2,100 bump. So teachers will get their $2,100 raise plus their step raise for next year. And so if you look on the median, the median step, that's going to equate to a little over 4% raise for teachers. If you look at the median step, it will be a little bit differently for each person on each step, just the way that we do our salary schedule. And then for classified, that is going to be, was it $800 or $900, Scott?
$900.
$900. So it'll be a $900 that we've layered in on all classified steps, and so they will get that $900 plus their step. And then the other added bonus that we've worked into GP is, as you know, health insurance goes up each year. And so we did have one year reprieve where it did not go up. It did go up in January, and we never pass that off to our employees because we feel like once they've signed a contract, we need to honor that contract and all the deductions for the entirety of the contract. So we always absorb those increases from January until July, but then we typically will kind of split the cost between what we pay and what the employer pays when there is an increase. However, this year, we are going to continue to absorb that cost of the rise in health insurance, and so we will not be increasing the employee portion of the deduction for health insurance this year. So if employees do get insurance with us, that will be an additional, an additional bonus that they will get that they do not have to pay this year. So we feel good about what what we've been able to accomplish this year. I think with the revenues coming in a little bit more steady than what we had predicted, and then Billy's promise of an increase in the instructional component, we feel confident that we can absorb this in the budget, and I think it goes with our goals of trying to tackle teacher teacher salary schedules. So I was requesting this on first and second read, just because I feel like if they get the $450 bonus, this has been such a hard year for them. If we were able to go ahead and let them know their raise is coming their way next year, I felt like that that might be well received and might help us keep morale high within the staff. Any questions for me?
All right.
It's a good move, and definitely, like I said, never, we're never where we want to be, and there's not enough money to reward them for what they've pulled off this year, but I think it's a good, a good step in the right direction.
Definitely great news. All right. Any further questions or comments for Kelly regarding our salary schedule for '21, '22 school year? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Some move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Kay Kay Webster?
Yes.
Tim Bobble?
Yes.
Merrill Frost?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our budget reading on our first reading for the 2021, '22 school year.
Everybody should have the proposed budget. Again, I'll I'll kind of approach it from revenues. Talk about the big three. Property taxes. The budget has $2,080,000. Last year, or this year, sorry, this year's budget that we're currently in has $2,100,000. So I'm not budgeting as much property tax next year as we're going to probably collect this year. What that boils down to is I'm just being very conservative. I really like to get the revenues as tight as we can. And then on the expenditure side, we talk about what programs we want to do, and that would be, you know, Kelly and Suzanne and Lori and Jamie Jordan. And then we just compare the two. I don't budget enough revenue to match what they want. I kind of start with where really what I think the revenue is, and then we set that aside, and we talk about expenditures. And so sales tax, I think we will, now I've budgeted quite a bit more in sales tax. The current year budget is $1.9 million. I'm sorry, the current year budget is $1.5 million. I've budgeted 1.9, so we're at a $400,000 increase in sales tax. I think we'll achieve that three reasons. Online activity, I think in 2018, Tennessee decided to go ahead and charge people, it's called Nexus, wherever you're physically located, used to be the rule. Now it's more like wherever the person that bought it. So when we buy something from somewhere else, they charge sales tax in the state of Tennessee and remit it. Now, there's a $500,000 gap, so if you're a small company and you sell under $500,000, you don't necessarily have to do that. You don't have to remit to Tennessee. I think Tennessee is going to lower that cap to $100,000 if they already haven't. That'll help us experience a significant increase in sales tax revenue. That's first. I think that we're going to experience a continuation of local tax revenue. So prior to COVID, people go to Knoxville, go to the mall, and go shopping. COVID hits, we stop doing that. I know we did, my family. I think what people are going to do is continue their habits, so going to the Walmart, going into Oak Ridge, which is Henderson County tax revenue, which does come to us. Lastly, if we can keep inflation under control, and it has been, right now, 12-month ending February, we're at 1.7% inflation. Historically, we're mid to ones to 2%, so we're we're pretty good right now. And then if we continue to get some housing and development going on, that'll be more residents paying sales tax in our county. However, we need a big box store. We need something big. The restaurants just don't produce enough sales tax. So that that those are the reasons why I think our sales tax will increase, and I've increased it quite a bit. I feel pretty comfortable there. BP, I budgeted $5,500,000. Our current budget, it's $4,975,000, so it's a $75,000 increase. Not much. That's a 1.5% increase. And Kelly just talked about them raising the BP 4%. Well, that's 4% on a very small part of the BP. 4% of 70% of salaries that they don't even pay 100% of the 70%. So I'm being very conservative with my BP as well. So overall, our revenues, I think I really land into the conservative portion of my little three. I'll never be in fantasy land, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay. We're rare.
Okay. I'm not fooling anybody. Okay. Any questions on the revenues that I've presented? You know, really, any other revenues that you see in there, I really, they're not material. They're they're great, and they help, but those are the big three: sales tax, property tax, BP. On the expenditure side, salary increases, 3% to 4% increase in our salaries as it's laid in there on the salary schedule, plus any step increase. I mean, that's a between a 1% and 2%. The way the salary schedule is structured, the step increase is greater as you move down the schedule. Remember, we have seven bands. It sounds complicated, but I really think it's fair and equitable the way we do it, and we've been very consistent for the past seven years, I believe, with that salary schedule. Health and dental insurance, Kelly had mentioned that we're we're covering the increase that really started in January of 2021. Just to put it in numbers for you, our health insurance is going to, and dental together, is about $600,000 a year is our cost as an employer. One thing that's in the budget that we'll have to talk about between now and second read is the transfer to the city to pay off the additional loan, the loan for the addition that we just completed. I've put that in the budget to pay it off, $912,000. But I think what we'll need to discuss in the interim is, do we want to pay it off, or do we want to roll that into another capital project?
And can I kind of interject there?
You can.
Okay. So we've been having some conversations, you know, our fund balance is getting to where Scott's feeling comfortable with it. While it sounds like it is a large fund balance, when you look at the debt that we owe, it's not really as large as it seems. We're kind of where the auditors feel like that we would need to be. With that said, we were lucky enough to be able to not really touch that million-dollar loan when we when we were building the new, some call it the Far West Wings. I call it the Wild West Wing, however we want to refer to that. But we were we were blessed enough to be able to not touch that loan. So one of the things Dr. Bobble and I were talking earlier today that we are going to gather, I think we probably need to go ahead and schedule our retreat a little earlier this year. We need to have some conversations about South Clinton Elementary School. We've got two choices that we can do with the remaining funds. We can either pay back the loan, or we can look, we've got some programming, and Leanne is really trying to think outside of the box as to where to put all of her programs with the space that she has this year. We know that we've got Patriot Park that has been built. We know that some new houses down there by the river are coming in, and a lot of her student enrollment dropped fairly significantly this year due to virtual, but we expect that to pop back up next year. And so we we need to decide as a board, not tonight, but it does need to be a discussion. Do we want to use those funds to go ahead and give her some additional classrooms and intervention rooms, similar to what we did at Clinton Elementary, and use those funds? Or do we want to pay off that million-dollar loan? And where Scott has landed is, you know, basically, if we foresee in the next two to three years, we would need to do an addition to South Clinton, then we don't need to pay back that loan because it doesn't make sense to pay back the loan and then two years later ask for another loan and pay $20,000, $25,000 fees and interest. And so that is a discussion that I just kind of want us to ponder, and then we will get together and set a date where we can actually have a retreat, and we can present some data to you, and you all can help us collaboratively decide what is the best route that you want us to go. So for now, I told Scott to put it in, or he made the decision to put it in payments to the city as if we're paying it off, but at any time, we could move that back into capital projects if we wanted to save it, and we're going to use it for an additional capital project two or three years down the road. So any questions on that?
My biggest fear, and I don't, I'm with the city, I don't like debt unless it's for growth and development. And I if I said that when we took on debt for South Clinton for the roof and the structural repairs. Financing growth and development, you're going to generate a future revenue stream. When you finance continuing operations, there's no revenue stream that's generated by that. You're just, you're fixing stuff that just wears out. You should be saving for that as time goes on and then paying for it. You know, we did incur this debt for growth and development, and if we do it again, you know, I think hopefully that would lead to growth at South Clinton. I think we anticipate it down the road. I think to consider, though, is, and I talked earlier about inflation being relatively low and stable, would not plan on that lasting too long. They can only print so much money, and the result of that is inflation. So remember, we've got a loan for $912,000, a million-dollar loan at 2.7% interest when rates were pretty low. Once inflation kicks in, the way they adjust inflation is they raise interest rates. So if we paid it off now, and then two years from now, we said, well, let's add on to South and borrow $1 million.
Have a much higher interest rate.
We're going to be borrowing more at a higher interest rate if inflation does indeed occur. I really, I'm kind of a doomsday kind of guy when it comes to that, if you haven't figured out, but.
We're aware.
Okay, you're aware of that, too. I'm very conservative in that, you know.
We're glad you're calling.
So, you know, if it's on your radar, and you really think maybe the chance is greater than 50% that that happens, my recommendation would be to keep the money and use it to, use that to finance the next capital project and not have to borrow anything.
The other thing that we have to consider is, like I said, we'll get to ESR, I'll just go ahead and talk about ESR 3.0 right now, but it has been passed, it's waiting on President Biden to sign, and it's his bill. I mean, so he'll he'll end up signing it. But what they are preparing us for is, we've not received the actual allocation for Clinton City Schools yet, but what Commissioner Schwinn is preparing us for is it would be ESR 1.0 plus ESR 2.0 times 190. So if that is the case, we would be looking at possibly $1.5 million coming our way with federal. Now, there will be strings attached to that, but there is a possibility, a possibility, I cannot say for sure, but Lori and I could work with federal programs, and there's a possibility we could use a portion of that money to go towards the South Clinton project because we would be adding additional classroom spaces, and we could say that, you know, you're spreading out, which we would be spreading out programs, and there are some loopholes with that, but federal programs said that we could call and talk to them, and we could kind of explain our situation and see if it would be an allowable expense, but that would be another source of revenue that we could possibly use for that project. So the timing has just kind of, all these things are coming together where it's worthy of a conversation.
So will we know about that before we decide we have to use the loan that already exists?
Correct. And we can do the second read on the budget, and if we don't have that information yet, we can keep it and paying it off. That doesn't mean we have to pay it off. It would just be a budget amendment, and Scott would just move the money once we decide. It could be in August or September. Once we decide, it would just be a budget amendment to put it in the line item of capital projects if that's what we decide we want to do.
What what is our monthly payment on that 1 million loan?
You're looking at, if nine years remain, we've made one payment, $114,000 a month, or a year.
A year.
Sorry. I was trying to be conservative.
We'll have that paid off really quick. So it's, so essentially, it's a nine-year loan, and all we need to do is just continue to make our regular yearly payments, and it's our money to do with as we.
Now, there's a prepayment penalty on it. So if we do pay it off early, it's a 1% prepayment penalty. So again, if you're if you're going to be doing something that would require a loan in the next couple of years, don't prepay it.
Well, the other thing that Scott and I explored was, we looked at, we basically have two loans now. The the energy efficiency, Scott says, that's free money. We don't worry about that. So we've got the, you know, the city paid off South Clinton loan for us, so that's off the table. So we have the West Wing, which is the never-ending loan that we've had forever, and then we have the Wild West. And so with the West Wing, you know, that is a tad, no, we thought it was slightly higher, but it actually wasn't. So so to Scott, I was like, well, we're already paying for maintenance on this, so would it make sense to go ahead and pay this off? But that portion of the loan is wrapped into a larger city loan. And so we can't, the way that these loans are structured, we can't even like make two or three years' payments in advance. You either make the year payment or you You either make the year payment or you pay it off with a penalty. Those are your choices. And so really to pay that off in advance is not an option for us because it's rolled into a bigger city plan. Am I saying that correct, Scott?
You are. We'd have to pay off the whole city plan and basically loan the city money to do so. It is the lower interest rate loan. It's 2.6%. So just as a percent, it makes more sense. If you're going to pay off one early, you pay off the higher interest rate. And that comes with a penalty too, the city's one. So it's, again, it's, we're in a good position. We have great cash flow. You know, to be able to say we can take on a one and a half million dollar addition and just pay cash for it is, and not worry about like if something else happens. It's a nice place to be. So y'all have put yourselves in a great spot. Now the tough part is staying there. Sometimes, you know, you get a little comfortable with that and it's easy to lose what you've built. So that's my thing is just.
You had to throw something dark and negative at me. You just couldn't, you couldn't stop at the happiness.
Y'all need to pray for Sarah, that's all I can say. But that, you know, so that, you know, can be, it's a great conversation to have where we want to be. But, so we have a balanced budget. There's no budgeted surplus in prior years. You know, we've, like I said, I take the revenues where I think they're going to be. We take the expenditures as what they want to do with programs. And if we have a surplus, we have a surplus. I don't increase expenditures to eat it up. I just budget the surplus. We have, we are budgeted, you know, really even, I think, I think we were out like $10,000 or $15,000 and I plugged it into revenue just to make it, you know. But for the most part, we were right on target. Cafeteria, well, any questions about the general purpose budget? Federal projects budget is real basic. We get a grant. That's our budget. There's really not too much wiggle room. The art comes in how we spend the money. 140, cafeteria fund. I haven't gotten the new rate from Airmark. They charge us a rate for every meal. It's called a meal equivalent. Our first year, that rate was $3.24. That's for every meal. Now, breakfast isn't one meal. Three breakfasts are two meals. There's a ratio. So we make a little bit of money on every breakfast. We make a little bit more money on every lunch. And we make a little bit more money on the à la carte. It's all based on a ratio. So the, the lunches and the breakfast and the à la carte, that all gets converted into a meal equivalent. So it was $3.24 in our first year. Year four, which we're in right now is $3.39, $3.40 rounded. It's a 5% increase over four years. Pretty good. The Consumer Price Index for the past 12 months is, well, there's various. You've got food and you've got fuel and commodities. But fuel of food, the CPI is, is kind of increased three to four percent every year. And that scares me because that affects low-income people to a greater degree is the price of food. The, the savior, which doesn't help us in cafeteria, but does help us within some other areas is fuel. So if you have ExxonMobil or Chevron in your 401K for the past year, you've been crying. For the past month, you've been laughing because it's great. But, and then you notice it at the gas tank too, the price has gone up. So I don't expect them to do, to have a big increase in cafeteria. I really try to drill them down. But that being said, it's probably going to be a 1% to 2% increase. USDA has extended their free food through September of 2021. So we don't have to worry about anything of a great degree until September. And I really feel like they're going to extend it all year.
So kids wait for free.
Cafeteria fund is, is, is very comfortable. Any questions on that? Sorry, I get off on the little tangents there.
You saw the eye, didn't you?
I did. Kelly's eyes get big. Time to move on.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our budget, our budget on our first reading?
Mr. Ray, I'm glad you're conservative. I'm in your camp 100%.
Thank you.
Because there's no trouble like money trouble.
I agree.
I'm with you.
You do a great job.
Oh, thank you. You can talk to Sarah anytime you want.
Okay. If she'll talk to my husband.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our budget for 2021, 2022 school year on a first reading. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
May I say yes?
Yes.
Moro Brown?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we'll move on to school board policies that we will need to do on our first and second reading.
These are just two TSBA recommended revisions to two policies. The State Board of Education recently passed a new state board ruling saying that school districts will be required to develop a diversity plan of how we're going to recruit and hire a more diverse staff. And so the language in these two policies just reflect that change of the state board ruling.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Kelly? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first and second reading, school board policies as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our purchasing policy exception request.
I'm going to defer this one to Scott Ray. This is in, this is in relation to some, a project we need to do at North Clinton Elementary School over spring break regarding some gas and our work with Powell Clinch. So Scott, do you want to?
Well, it kind of goes, it's never as easy as it should be. So in a perfect world, we could follow the $5,000, you should get multiple quotes between $5,000 and $25,000. But we have to remember that we have a contract with Powell Brothers for the repairs and maintenance and continued warranty for many of the units on top of North Clinton's roof. So as my grandmother would say, too many hands in the pot spoil the stew. If you get too many people touching the equipment, it becomes a blame game. It's the gas pipe. It's the HVAC unit. Somebody damaged. So I like to have the same people servicing the same equipment year over year. Powell Brothers has been really good at service with us. They're, we had a boiler problem at Clinton. At four in the morning, I called Brad Powell, woke him up. And we were over there at the boiler and he told me to try a few things and I said, okay, I'll try. Well, I think he gave up on me and he, he met me there. Thank you. But that's the kind of service we get from somebody that's located in town. That being said, I'm not paying plain favorites. I really think it's in our best interest to have an exception on the quotes and trying to line up people to replace these gas lines. I don't really think it's a material amount of money, but it is outside our current policy. So I just wanted to, I guess, get your approval, forgiveness for moving forward for something that was slightly outside of our policy.
And if you don't care, just give them a quick 10-second Reader's Digest version of what they're doing with the gas pipes at North Clinton.
Everything, so, okay, I smelled, smelt gas or smelled gas anyway, one day. And so I called Powell Clinch. They came out and replaced the meter. Couple of days later, I get a phone call from Kelly that said the fire department has shut down the school. I go there and I smell gas again. So I know it's not the meter and I called Brad Powell and he comes out and does his testing. And basically from the meter to every unit on the roof and into the cafeteria, because our cafeteria equipment serves the gas, all the pipes have little leaks. Nothing that was dangerous because that's my first question. I don't really care about money when it's stuff like that. But it wasn't dangerous, but he did say, you know, we need to just go ahead and get it done because we're, we're losing gas. And so that's where that, that started.
And to be very clear, the leaks were not inside the school. What was happening is when teachers and students were coming inside the school and the door was opening, that smell was just kind of coming in, in the areas that the door was open. But it's something we definitely need to get fixed. The fire department has come up there and has ruled that it was completely safe for students.
Yeah, by the time I showed up, I think it was 7:30. By the time I got to North, the fire department was like, we're fine.
But definitely something we needed to fix quickly.
That all kind of transferred.
It's going to be fixed over spring break.
Because the date of my memo, I don't have it in front of me, but the date of that memo is the date I got the quote from, from Powell Brothers. And they had to do some investigating with Powell Clinch to make sure they were up to code. Because the gas lines that are there are pretty old. So if they're going to replace them, they need to do it up to current standards. So there's some requirements with a three-inch line versus a two-inch line. I'll stop there.
I mean, to me, something like that would be an emergency. Is there not an emergency exemption to the bidding for emergencies?
There is, however, that does not qualify.
Well, I mean, it wasn't.
If there was a safety issue, then it would be an emergency and we would have already had it fixed.
Right.
But the fact that I waited, you know, to get the quote, we're going to have to turn everything off to repair. So the natural time to do that is the first break was spring break. So the emergency is a little more restrictive than it sounds. For example, if your $20,000 HVAC unit goes out, but it was 25 years old, they don't count that as an emergency.
And I think for this.
The natural thing would be for it to break.
And when you have a situation like the exemption that we're asking for, Scott can write that up and present it to the auditors. But it just provides a little bit more clarity if you all have approved it. Since it's kind of outside, outside the, the policy, it just shows that you all were in agreement, that he needs to go this route. And it would keep us from an audit finding.
I believe it's our policy, the $5,000.
Yeah, is the, is the, is the requirement not, I mean, is, is the exemption for that, Scott, if I remember right, is it not higher than $5,000?
For quotes, it's five.
For quotes, it's five? Did they not raise that?
No, we, we, that used to be, with our policy, it used to be a thousand.
Okay.
It used to be a thousand and 10,000. And then when we raised, we were allowed the control or comptroller, the state allowed, if your city government or your county government went up, based on your charter, went up to 25, then the school board was also allowed to go up to 25. And we did so.
Okay, so we, we did go to 25.
For RFP. Quotes is 5,000 and then an RFP is 25,000.
Okay. And that, and that limit is still at 5,000. So we, if it's not 10,000 and we could raise that and bypass this in the future.
I, I mean, honestly, I think it's a good, 5,000 is a good number. If I had the time and I didn't feel like we had that issue with Powell Brothers maintaining the equipment and the gas that feeds that equipment, then I probably would have called, you know, XYZ Gas and, and, you know, another company and just made the phone call and said, give me a quote. But we do have that relationship with the equipment and Powell Brothers. I think it was, it's a good idea just to.
And they know it.
And they know it.
Yes.
Would it, would it be feasible or a good idea to essentially include within the heat and air units? Could we do from meter to heat and air units and all that included in one contract with one company?
Well, right now, if Powell Brothers does this replacement, we've kind of achieved that.
That, that would be under their warranty?
Yeah, from the meter to the unit, including the unit, is their baby.
It'll be Powell Brothers.
So if there's anything wrong, he can't call me up and say, well, your gas line, well.
It's your gas line.
It's your gas line. And he really understands my philosophy because I talk that way to them.
Okay.
Everything that we do, including our boiler, you know, we're going to have a five-year warranty. It's their baby for five years and we can auto renew it every three years. So it could be their baby for however long we want to do that.
Yeah, and, and thanks for letting me rack your brain. I was just trying to see if there was anything that we as a board could do to help you and allow you to do that with a little more free rein. You know, whether it's an emergent, I know with an emergency, but this wasn't life threatening, so technically it's not an emergency. However, is there anything that we can do to, whether it's bumping up the limit in case something like this comes up again or?
I think maybe just having an unwritten or we can put into policy that we do exactly what I did.
Okay.
You know, when we have an issue like that, we just bring it to the board. No one can accuse us of violating the policy if you've allowed us to do so. I think 5,000 is a good to hold people accountable, including myself. I'm all for doing it the easy way sometimes, but I think it's more conservative. Keep it at five.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our policy exception request? All right. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. That finishes up new business. We'll move into reports and information.
All right, we start, Monica Rail was not able to be with us tonight. I've got a couple of things in my director's report that she wanted to make sure that I communicated to you. So we'll just go ahead and start with Ms. Sharp today. She's probably going to start off with a really good piece of good news about her day yesterday.
So it kind of, we just want to say thank you to Mark Trout from Rusty Wallace Chevrolet. He came and donated about $20,000. Well, it was $20,000 exactly. So we could get a new digital sign and Joey got to come and she did that. He was there. But a couple of years ago, he had brought to her appreciation gifts. And he said, what do you need? And I thought, well, I want to say that. I was like, you need an electric sign. And so then AT, you know, talked to him about some other things. And I was like, AT, well, AT has wrote from him on his own accord. And he finally came yesterday and he was so kind and so supportive. So we are just excited about that. I think they got to a certain sample today, Joey and Kelly. I was in interviews, but we are excited. We have so many parents that look at that sign and text me and ask questions. So I just think it's going to look better and faster communication. So we're excited. We're also going to talk about leak day at the principal's bar. And we have lots of fun this year at Reed, for Reed Week. Can you hear me?
You're fine, but hey, we're informal here.
Andy, do you need her to start back at the beginning?
Okay. I do want to say in case someone did not hear me that might be watching this, that we are appreciative of Mark Trout from Rusty Wallace Chevrolet for donating $20,000 for a digital sign. And then Reed Week, I was just saying we had a lot of fun this year at Reed Week. It was probably, we probably had so much more participation with students and teachers this year than it seems like we've had in the past. We had dress up days. We had wear red day to show the love for reading on Monday. On Tuesday, we had Dr. Seuss Dress Up Day. Wednesday, crazy socks. Thursday's PJs. So get comfy and read. And then Friday, favorite book character. But it was really just, it was good, I think, for everyone, not only to celebrate their love of reading, but just also to come together as a school, you know, and, and have a little fun, which has been a little bit, I don't want to say taken away because they still have fun in the classroom, but as far as whole school events, it was very, very nice. We had a lot of guest readers, including the UT baseball team, student leadership team. We had a professor from Emory and Henry College and many friends and family members. So it's just, it's been good at CES.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
We have a special guest reader. It will be Joey Smith. He's super excited.
Is he reading about some sloth? What is it called?
He's going to borrow the book from Scott. I actually wanted to see if Scott would want to read my school board report tonight because he's been so excited during his report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're just such an easy punching.
You're just such an easy punching bag, evidently. All right, Ms. Bonesteel, come on up. We'll see what kind of crack you've got for Mr. Ray today.
Way to put the pressure on. It's going to be really nice tonight.
Scott, I'm on your side.
I will say, you know, even before my time at South Clinton Elementary, Read Day has been something that's been a huge part of the culture of South Clinton Elementary. And I don't know what we would have done, could we not have celebrated Read Day? Because it's such a big part of what we do as a school. And we really kind of toiled over, how are we going to make this fun for the kids when we can't come together as a group and have a big assembly, and we can't have all these people coming into the school? So I do want to say thank you to Whitney Hawkins. She is the chair of my Read Day committee, and she did a great job of coming up with ideas to help us celebrate Read Day and still make it a big deal for our kids and a fun day for them. So we had 46 different videos of people reading books that teachers could go into a folder on their Google Drive and choose from. So some, you know, we had a contest to see who read the most books during the day and who listened to the most books. And we had readers from retired teachers to central office staff to UT baseball players. Dan Jenkins from Clinton High School read. And we had business people, Katherine Burkebeck from Spindletree, Lisa Smith from Clinch River CrossFit. Trying to think, I have the list in front of me. I'm so sorry. Dream Dance Studio did a video. Hoskins did a video. So just lots of support. Joey Smith did a video for us, so thank you so much. We had lots of support from the community on this, and we just appreciated it so much. We had a costume contest, as we always do, and this year I let central office staff choose our costume winner for our students, and I sent them the pictures, and they said, oh, I like this one, and this one, and this one. And I said, that's great. I need one. So give me one winner.
That was the most difficult thing we did all week long. We never want to do that again. That was way too hard. They looked so fabulous. We had such a hard time narrowing it down to one.
So many good costumes, and the winner was a first grader, Ms. Claire Gibson. She dressed as Ms. Frizzle from Magic School Bus. So she is a redhead already, and she had her little dress with all the Fun Planets and everything, and she was just adorable. So she was so excited to win that big trophy. And then we did a contest with the staff members. I posted pictures on Facebook, and the staff member that got the most comments on their picture over the weekend was the winner. So Ms. Teresa Schlant was our winner this year. She got lots of comments. But it was just a super fun day, and I think it was great that everybody kind of worked together to make it special for our kids, because there are a lot of things that we've had to do differently and a lot of things that they've had to miss out on this year. And it was just a really fun day for everybody.
And the South Clinton bear made an appearance.
And the South Clinton bear made an appearance, and only one kid cried at the sight of the bear. It was a good day.
Thank you, Leanne.
That concludes our reports for this evening.
All right. Also note that sixth grade graduation will be May the 21st, and that will be at the Ritz. Next school board meeting will be here on April the 8th. If you're going to be unable to attend, please let Kim know. And with that, we will move on into the director's report.
Okay, so we're passing down a couple of announcements for Clinton City. Still a very, very busy time. We've got a couple of thank yous that we want to publicly thank. Jenna has already done a wonderful job of thanking Mark Trout and Rusty Wallace Chevrolet for making a generous donation of $20,000 to Clinton City Schools that will be used for Clinton Elementary digital sign. We are already in the process of receiving quotes for that as we speak. And so once this is in place, we are going to move forward. And with Clinton City funds, we are going to begin the process of a digital sign as well for North Clinton Elementary. So at that point, all three of our schools will have an updated digital sign for parent communication. Many thanks to Wilson's Rot Iron and Ace Hardware. They donated the materials and supplies, the pole and the basketball backboard for North Clinton Elementary. They have a concrete pad on their playground, and their basketball goal was taken down just because it had gotten old and unsafe. And so we are going to use spring break to hopefully get that put up so that students can enjoy that addition on the playground. And then many thanks to Ken Linert and Tony Cox. They came in this second year that they've done this, but as part of Read Week celebration, they allow us to choose four teachers within the district that just are huge advocates for literacy. That is always difficult for us to do, because every teacher is an advocate for literacy. But we were proud that they awarded the Courier Literacy Award to Laura Roop at Clinton Elementary, Megan Flora at North Clinton Elementary, Mindy Wilson at North Clinton Elementary, and Brandy Bocheers at South Clinton Elementary. They were given a $50 gift card and a free T-shirt. And so that was, that was lots of fun for them to go around and to receive that award that they, they were surprised. They weren't aware that was coming their way. You heard what a great success Read Day was from the school principals. It was, and I think the reason it was so special is just so much has been taken away from us this year. And with all the mitigation efforts, it just feels like you're constantly just trying to keep kids safe. For us to be able to hold a day that is fun, that was focused on literacy, and while we couldn't bring adults into the school personally, they came in virtually. It was just a wonderful day across all three schools. You had heard us talk earlier about S.R. 3.0 funds that are coming our way, so we've already talked about that. As always, we appreciate federal funding, and we will make sure that we spend that on quality things for Clinton City schools. But we just have to go into it knowing that there are strings attached to federal funds. There's only certain things that we can spend it on. So while I would love to say, wow, let's give teachers a great, big raise, we know that this money is going to go away. So it's one-time funds that have strings attached. So as we learn more about that, Lori will be, she's the one that's in charge of all of our federal grants. So she has been scurrying around busy with all of these grants and keeping all the documentation and writing the applications for it. But she will, we will have more information next month for you about what we're going to use to spend that on. All teachers received their first vaccine from Anderson County Health Department. Our second dose is scheduled for March the 26th. And I cannot say enough about Charles Turner, Gail Baird, and the Anderson County Health Department and their work in collaboration with Clinton City Schools during this COVID crisis. They have been such good friends to us. And when you talk to other directors across the district and their relationship with their health department, I mean, it's just like every, we are just blessed in Clinton. You know, they have helped us with contact tracing. Charles answers his phone calls every time we call. He helps us answer the hard questions. And when I called him, when I found out we were moving to 1B, I was like, how fast can we make this happen? And he had our teachers vaccinated within the first week. And it was just, not only us, but they did Anderson County Schools, Clinton City Schools, and Oak Ridge City Schools all in one day. And so you talk about logistics. We all, we all went, you pulled up, we had appointment time, you went into a tent, you signed some papers, you went into a queue to wait 15 minutes. It was probably one of the best logistical experiences we have ever encountered. And we just, we cannot sing their praises enough about making sure that teachers were put on the front end of that, because they could have easily worked us in when it was convenient. But the staff stayed until 7 o'clock that night on a Friday night to make sure that our teachers were vaccinated. So we so appreciate that. Wanted to let you know that we are going to be running a summer school program this summer from June the 7th until July 2nd at North Clinton Elementary. North Clinton Elementary is going to be the site, but it will serve kids from all three elementary schools. This is part of the learning loss bill that was passed during the special session in January. So it is a state law that we offer this program. In state law states it's a six-week program. We did apply for a waiver for a four-week program, just because we felt like we would get more teachers to participate and more kids to participate. We feel like that quality is better than quantity, so that's kind of the attitude that we took. Right now, we have sent letters to all students who have scored below the 25th percentile. While we are required to invite students, the students are not mandated to attend. That was not part of the law. So what Lori is seeing right now, she's also in charge of that. She's wearing many hats, and she's still standing. We're seeing about a fourth to a third of our kids that are saying, yeah, that we've, that we have heard back from that they're going to participate.
What are the hours of that?
It is going to be a typical school day, so 7:45 to 2:45. And then, so it's, it's an intense day. It will be an hour of stream classes, which is your STEM class with reading and arts. And so that will be on a rotating basis. So it's two hours of reading, two hours of math, an hour of intervention, an hour of playtime, and then an hour of stream classes. And so then we have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club, knowing that if parents work, they're going to need after-school care. And so the Boys and Girls Club is going to set up a special after-school care at North Clinton for the summer school kids and stay open until 6 o'clock. So if parents are working, it just functions like a typical school day. So breakfast and lunch will be served. We picked North Clinton for several reasons, because we knew a lot of our North Clinton children could walk and transportation would not be an issue. That's also where we're serving our seamless summer option. So we'll be able to serve breakfast and lunch for free, but then we'll also continue to do the pickup through the summer for families who want to drive by and pick up the breakfast and lunch like we've offered last summer as well. So our minimum number, we really, really would like to serve 150 to 160 kids. Right now, Lori, what's your count? So we've got 68 signed up right now. And principals are working hard, and teachers are going to work hard to make personal contacts with those who haven't returned their forms yet. We're encouraging parents that even if they can only attend three out of the four weeks because of a vacation, three is better than nothing, so come on. So that's being funded through several sources, through Tena Funds and LEAP Grant Funds through the state. And then we will have to use some of our S.R. 2.0 funds to supplement, because we want teaching assistance there for RTI. We're going to need to have a principal there. We want a nurse there. We want an SRO there. And so we're having to layer just some additional positions out of S.R. just to make it a quality program. So we're going to continue to push that. We want the right kind of kids in this program, because we feel like we can make some really good gains with them in four weeks. So then wrapping up, our first season of Blaze Archery came to an end. And this has been so cool. I drug Joey. He came to meet the sign today, and I drug him up there. Our kids are shooting bullseye. I got a, I got a, I got a video of your daughter. She busted the balloon. It is like amazing. They were doing such a good job. And one of our, one of our girls shot five or six arrows, and three of them were in the 10-point bullseye. And so there's opportunity for archery for our children. I mean, there's scholarships for that. So Terry Curley has just done an amazing job. So that was offered to our sixth graders this year. We hope to expand it now that Terry knows what she's doing, and she has lived the program, and we feel a little bit more confident about putting a bow in the hands of our sixth graders. They handled it so well. They did great. Yes, the arrow. We are gearing up for our last two Blaze activities this year, which will be bowling and track. And then wanted to put on your all's radar that on April the 10th, Katherine Burkebeck is working to do, we're going to hold, it's called Mosaic, a downtown celebration of the arts. Just due to COVID, we really can't do our Kincaid House this year. And so we're doing just something a little different. It's going to actually be a fundraiser for Anderson County Arts Department, but they have offered to let us kind of showcase some of our arts as well. So the sixth grade students are working collaboratively at each school on an art project, and that art project will be one large art project that which, which will be displayed in the windows of Market Street. And our Orf Ensemble will be performing. Our ukulele club is going to perform. And there'll be face painting and games and lots of activities for kids on that day, so it should be a fun community event. And then what did not make the report, but I feel like I need to do a huge shout-out, is this afternoon, we received 12 boxes from 3M. This is their yearly donation that they make to Clinton City Schools. It was about $8,000 worth of 3M supplies. Everything ranging from lots of Post-it notes, lots of Post-it notes, to your outdoor Post-it notes, which I brought you. I didn't know they existed. So we got lint rollers, we got masking tape, we got Scotch tape, but just a wide variety of instructional supplies. So the Sweet Central Office lady spent their afternoon dividing that up into three equal boxes for the three schools. And so the teachers will have a little mini 3M Christmas as part of the collaborative day tomorrow. So we certainly appreciate 3M for their support. And then that concludes my report.
All right.
Spring break's next week, right?
And spring break is next week, and no school tomorrow, and service day for teachers.
All right. Any other business to come before the board? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Andy, thank you, sir. We appreciate you as well, and I'll declare this meeting adjourned.
Yes, if we can gather for just a moment and kind of.